Hi, I'm Julie Thompson. Welcome to the Plymouth Planning Board Candidate Interview. I want to take a moment to thank our candidate for participating in this interview and collaborating with PAC TV to bring this informational programming to residents and voters this election season. Let me explain the format. We will be conducting a one-on-one interview-style Q&amp;A format with each candidate lasting about 30 to 40 minutes. Responses will not be timed and follow-up questions may be asked during this format. We aim to ask up to about four questions, but that will depend on the length of the responses, along with any follow-up discussion during this exchange. Candidates will be allowed to address anything not covered or that they would like to add clarification to at the end of the interview in their closing remarks. So let's get started. Today, we're speaking with Steve Bowleton, one of the two candidates for the Planning Board in the town of Plymouth. Steve, thank you for joining us today.
Thank you so much for having me.
Alrighty, we're going to get right into the questions, okay? "The goal of every community is to be a sustainable one, offering economic opportunities, a safe place to raise a family, access to clean air and water, and a sense of community. Can Plymouth be considered a sustainable community? And if not, how can the Planning Board be part of creating this type of community?"
Well, Plymouth certainly can be considered a sustainable community in that we have all of the elements to be fully functional for our residents. We have an unbelievable set of opportunities when it comes to our land use in particular. We're historical villages and downtowns, Plymouth Patuxent. We have the ocean and the waterfront. We have our ponds. We have our forests. So we have everything imaginable that's necessary to be a sustainable community. And sustainability is not just the environmental side, but also the economic side. And that's obviously a very big issue when it comes to Plymouth. I hear regularly the complaints from people when it comes to taxes. And taxes are a big issue here. We are really very median when it comes to our tax rate, when it comes to this state. But we're somewhat of a victim of our own success. Because we are such a desirable place, more and more people are coming here to live. And it's driving up our home prices. And that drives up residential tax bills. At the same time, we don't have enough commercial development to offset that. Now Plymouth is never going to be one of those communities that's a 40, 50, 60% of our tax base is commercial. That's not who we are. It's not who I would want us to be. But we have the opportunity, given where we are, located as we are in the southeast, on the major Route 3 corridor, to bring in the types of businesses that not only will help us economically, but that will provide quality jobs for our residents and services that we so desperately need.
Okay. So as a follow-up, if you were to write an ad for the town of Plymouth, like, "This is the great place to live," what are the three bullet points that you would say make this a wonderful, sustainable community?
Well, I think I touched on part of it. You know, Plymouth is more than just the Rock. That's sort of the tagline.
Yep.
We do have an incredible outdoors. And it's something that I'd love to see exploited more when it comes to year-round activity. I want more people to come visit Plymouth in the fall for foliage. I want them to be here in the winter for cross-country skiing. I want them to be here in the spring enjoying the outdoors and nature. So that's certainly tagline number one. Number two is, look at who we are. If I'm trying to bring business into town, we are ideally located, we are the hub of southeast Massachusetts. There are 65,000 residents here. You're not going to find a better concentration and a diverse community economically. We have young people. We have long-term residents. We have newbies. We have seniors. We have lots of seniors. We are now one-third seniors. Something that, as part of the Senior Task Force, I've been focusing a great deal on. Senior services are an absolute necessity for our town. And we should be certainly encouraging more people to come and provide those types of services. And above and beyond that, I think the greatest thing about Plymouth is, we are a community. I came here 17 years ago. And from day one, I'm always amazed at the fact that I could walk down the street anywhere in town, in any one of the villages, out in the woods, say hi to people, and people respond back. People are here in Plymouth because they want to be here, not because they have to be here. That's an unbelievable feeling. It's something that we absolutely need to preserve.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go on to question number two. "Economic development is always a major topic of discussion in this town. Based on what Plymouth can offer, what type of business and/or industry would be best suited for the town to increase tax revenue and ease the tax burden currently experienced by the residential taxpayers without being a magnet for controversy?"
Ah, the racetrack question. The town of Plymouth has, as I mentioned, a somewhat unique demographic. Whatever the number is, 104 some odd square miles, 65,000 people scattered through a bunch of different villages. We have the opportunity to bring in a diverse set of businesses that don't cause harm to our community. And ultimately, that's the word that I keep coming back to, "community." Plymouth is a community. And everything that we bring in here, whether that's residences, whether that's businesses, whether that's industry, should be community-focused. As I mentioned again, one-third of our residents are seniors. That cries for a bigger medical community. A great opportunity for Plymouth. There are people who travel from the Cape all the way into Boston for medical care. That's crazy. We should be the epicenter for that here in the southeast. People should be coming to Plymouth for their medical care. They shouldn't be leaving Plymouth to get it. Another area that I feel is incredibly vital for us is trades. Try and get an electrician, a plumber, a carpenter these days. It's tough. Certainly, construction is not slowing down anytime soon. And when construction, new construction does slow down, that's when people go ahead and renovate their own homes. Those are great opportunities for our community, especially to provide an opportunity for jobs. There is no question that somebody who learns a trade learns it for life. It's a skill that never goes out of style. And we have the opportunity to tie in for our young people. We have some great trade programs through our high schools to tie those groups into training programs, apprenticeships, and to create an opportunity for young people to find a job, work through it, and then hopefully eventually start their own business.
So I can see how the medical industry could provide a corporate tax base. They're generally larger buildings. They have a lot of people. They have a big footprint. But how could the trades bring in a commercial tax base to the town?
Because again, the goal is to have these businesses here. Businesses that will have personal property, business personal property as well. So yes, they'll occupy some of our space. And we have empty space right now that would be ideally suited to turn into offices and warehouses for trades. But again, the whole point is, it's not just about the numbers. And that's something that Plymouth has to get. It's not just about the numbers. We need to create these opportunities for people as well. Manufacturing is another good one. Light manufacturing, light industrial. We have some great businesses here in town that do that kind of work. And we can certainly do with more. Again, large facilities comparatively for Plymouth, industrial machines, good tax base, and the opportunity for skilled jobs that pay a living wage. Hospitality is the next one.
So let me just follow up on that. So one of the problems with, that we all face, and every town faces, is employing people to work at places like a manufacturing plant because they can't afford to live around here. How do you circle that square?
It's a catch-22. There's no question about it. The question becomes, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? If you bring in the businesses that pay the wage, then those people can afford the homes. Now that doesn't mean, of course, we don't have a completely different issue when it comes to home affordability here in town.
And we'll get into that.
And I'm sure that that's an issue. And I don't want to address that right now. But we have the opportunity to create jobs that pay a living wage. Hospitality is another one. And yes, there's a broad spectrum when it comes to that. If we're talking about hotels, yes, there are low-paying wages in their jobs. And that's unfortunate. But it does provide opportunity. It provides someone the ability to go through and to start. And I've seen so many people over the years start in a business, but work their way up and through. And that's what we need to find. We need to find those businesses that, again, want to be part of our community. They want to bring people up. They want to advance them. Last one that comes to mind is technology-related businesses. And yes, I know there's the Amazon shipping and that's it. We are not going to be bringing in a large corporate headquarters. We, A, can't compete for that, and B, I wouldn't want to. I have seen historically, from my experience in working with other towns, exactly what it takes to bring those types of business in. The concessions that are made, the giveaways when it comes to taxes, the expenses in infrastructure. It is an incredible burden on the community to start with, with the hope, and that's what it is, it's a hope that that business becomes part of the community. We're not going to turn into Seattle. It's not going to work. But at the same time, with the greater mobility now created, if COVID has taught us nothing, it's people can work from anywhere. Bringing in the types of people who can work in small spaces, but still bring in very credible jobs, skills, technology, and teach other people how to do that, whether it's in coding and software, or in hardware and repair. All of it has real value to the town.
Okay. Now, for question number three. Every single year, this question is asked, and we have yet to see any real formidable action on it. So affordable or workforce housing is one of the priorities listed by the Planning Board in its Housing Production Plan and one of its goals listed on the town website. Yet there doesn't seem to be housing available that the workforce can afford. Despite the growth we've seen in residential development, how can workforce housing be created in Plymouth? And is it something that isn't achievable at this time? Or does there need to be a creative planning process or partnership between maybe the town and a private entity to make it happen?
It's a challenging question. No question about it. You're absolutely right. And I can see why. Every year it comes up, and every year we talk about it. It is achievable, but at the same time, there is a lot of hurdles. One of the biggest continues to be the "not in my backyard" mentality.
Okay, so what do you mean by that?
Well, I'll give an example. Our master plan, which is in 2004, was when it was published, is currently undergoing a review. I'm on the committee, I'm the chair of the committee, actually doing that review in order to update it and come up with a new plan. What I've discovered reviewing that master plan, which of course is created by going to the residents, it's not just some group in town that makes up these decisions. It was focus groups and public meetings and surveys. And it's the view of the residents. When it came to affordable housing, was the idea that we create opportunities everywhere we have housing, focused on our village centers. We have a village-centric approach to housing here in Plymouth. And it's not a bad one, because those are the areas in which we have infrastructure. We want to develop where we have roads and sewers and access to things, as opposed to in our rural areas, which we really want to preserve. But when the idea of bringing affordable housing comes to those centered, village-centered areas, there's a lot of pushback. A good example, one of the things that was talked about in our master plan all the way back to 2004 was the idea of accessory dwelling units. Allowing people who have homes to create a small adjunct to that home so that they could either rent that to somebody, or if you're a senior, move into that and rent the remainder of your home. Great idea. Use as existing facilities. You're not allowed to expand your footprint. You have to be on sewer to do it. And you have to be owner-occupied, which means that you're always going to have somebody who cares living in the home.
Who has their skin in the game.
Exactly. And yet, not once, but twice, it has gone to town meeting and failed. It's a hard question.
Because it makes sense. So why would that fail?
The phraseology that was used each time really came down to, "I don't want to change my neighborhood. I don't want that in my neighborhood." There is a perception, I think a false perception, but a perception that by doing that, you're going to grossly increase traffic. You're going to create an area in which there is more activity than you want. It's going to change the character of the neighborhood. And people don't understand, there are not a lot of houses that this can happen to.
Right.
We're not talking about an opportunity to completely develop new affordable housing through accessory dwelling units. It's a small piece of the puzzle. But yet, even that small piece doesn't pass. This gets to another issue for me, though, which is the whole, "If we do nothing, we lose our ability to control what happens." I use the example of the housing unit that's going in behind Home Depot at the old exit five. That's a commercial space. It's commercial land. We had multiple proposals for people to build commercial development back there. And the town thwarted it.
Why?
The idea, again, continues to be, there's an element in town which simply wants no construction. And their belief is, if they thwart construction, then things won't get built. But as that has proven, if you thwart construction, you lose the ability to decide what type of construction happens. So rather than have a commercial development there that the town could have worked with a developer on to create something that, A, would have been beneficial to us from a revenue standpoint, and B, preserve as much of the area as possible, we have large-scale residential housing. Because somebody used a state statute, it's chapter 40B, to say, "A certain percentage of this is going to be low to moderate income." And by doing that, they completely circumvent town zoning. And that's something that's going to happen again and again if we don't focus on working with people to come up with intelligent uses for our land.
Sure, okay. And maybe, yeah, okay. Let's go to the next question, because I think it's probably appropriate. So each board in town can look at the same issue and come at it from different viewpoints to address it in their own bubble. Is that the most efficient way for the boards to work towards solving an issue, like the one you just talked about? Or would it be possible for there to be maybe quarterly public meetings where boards and committees could gather to work on a singular issue in the same room in tandem?
This goes to some degree to the nature of Plymouth government. Plymouth's government has stayed relatively the same over almost 400 years. We have very interested, active, and well-meaning people working on boards and committees throughout the town. And you're absolutely right. We end up with a lot of overlap as a result. But no one wants to take away a committee. Nobody wants to take away a board. We want as many people as conceivably possible involved and active. The more heads to a problem, the better. The more ideas, new perspectives, new approaches, all great things. So we want to do that. What I think we need to do is make sure that the boards do talk to each other and come up with ways to work collectively, to say, "Okay, I have this committee, you have this committee. Can we at least agree that these two need to work together a certain percentage of the time?" And report back to both of us so that we can collectively come up with a real plan, a real focus as to what they need to be working on. And that's something that's important in many areas. With our land use in particular, environmental is one. We have just created the position of our sustainability coordinator. And it is important that that position work well with others. We have no less than seven different committees involved in environmental and sustainability. And we have multiple town departments that do that same thing. They all have a piece. We've got to work together. It's a challenge, because it's not the nature of Plymouth government. Our government continues to grow as our town continues to grow. We need to do something a little bit more focused. And I'm hoping that as part of the Planning Board, I can bring some of that.
Okay. And your last question. "The seat you're running for is for a five-year term. Decisions made by the Planning Board affect Plymouth now, but also down the road. How do you view your role on the board during the five years you'll be on it? And what impact do you want to make on the town beyond that?"
I have said on multiple occasions that I consider town government to be both leading and following. I feel that the people who serve as representatives for the town should be the ones who live with the consequences of their decisions. It's unfair to those behind us to leave them with something that they can't handle. So in terms of sitting on the Planning Board, I'm looking to try and do two things. Most people see the Planning Board as site review and subdivision proposals. It's more than that. Our town charter defines the Planning Board as the board responsible for the physical, environmental, community, and economic development of the town. That's a huge responsibility.
Yeah. That's a mouthful.
I've read it many times.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, you're right. It encompasses an awful lot.
It really does. The Planning Board is a sister entity to our Select Board. Both have their licensing and regulatory aspects, and both have their planning and long-term goal-setting aspects. I want to make sure that in the Planning Board, we do those things efficiently, effectively, but most importantly, openly. I want to make sure that anybody who shows up in front of the Planning Board has access to all the information that they need, they have an opportunity to be heard, and their position and opinions are considered. Not everybody is going to agree with a decision made by any board or committee. And that's okay. That's to be expected. But I think it goes to my personal nature as an attorney who, for 30 years, has stood in front of judges, juries, appellate panels, boards, and regulatory agencies. And I've had to, every time I open my mouth, present my argument supported by facts and law. I see that as no different in serving on the Planning Board. Everyone should understand exactly what the facts are and exactly why decisions are being made.
All right, excellent. So your last five minutes, why don't you go right into your camera and talk about anything that we didn't cover, or something you want to add to, or just anything you want to talk about?
Well, we touched a little bit on the idea of development in town that is non-controversial. And right now, we have one of the most controversial developments that has ever been put forth, certainly since the power plant. And that's this racetrack proposal. And I'm calling it a racetrack proposal because that's what it is. I'm not going to offer a personal opinion on whether or not I think it's a good idea, because if elected to the Planning Board, I expect some portion of that at some point, if it goes forward, to come before me. And I don't think it's fair to anyone to prejudge a proposal. But it's also, to me, even more important to explain to people that my opinion doesn't matter. As an elected official of this town, on those matters that are generational, that will define us for who we are for decades to come, and it's an 80-year lease that they would be entering into, for those issues, the will of the people has to be heard and followed. I have, in the past, said this and proposed non-binding resolutions on our ballots for that to occur. And just last night, I submitted a statement again to the Select Board in favor of a non-binding resolution with respect to this issue. Because it's critical that the people get a chance to be heard, not just those who show up at one or two meetings, not those who go ahead and rail on Facebook, but everyone. It's critical that their voice is heard and that it is followed, because this is not a simple numbers matter. This isn't a simple question of what's in it for Plymouth. This is going to define who we are to a large degree. And that's what the people should be allowed to do. So that's one issue. And that actually gets to another issue I do have, which is town communication. Facebook and social media in general are an incredible tool. I have used it to try and keep people informed through my website, Steve for Plymouth. And I have learned an incredible amount about what is going on as a result of other people. The whole tech environmental issue, the proposal to dump radioactive water into our bay is a key example. There are people who have been following this for decades. And without them, and without their sharing that information, it wouldn't have come forward. And our community wouldn't have been able to rally behind it. And I wholeheartedly support those people and thank them. But at the same time, there's also a nastiness, especially when it comes to town politics. We've become very focused on personalities rather than on issues. And I'd like to try and step back from that. I am very fact-focused. I always have been. That's who I will be as a public official, someone who will follow the facts. I don't want it to become about personalities, because once you do, you lose the opportunity to get good ideas from every source. I'm independent of that. I can work with everyone, so I can listen to anyone. And I think that that's an important aspect of any public official, though.
Yeah, great. So you want to just say what you're closing to the people that are going to be out there voting?
I have spoken in the past about balance in town government. And planning is a critical example of that. We have worked very hard to save our open spaces, to preserve our historical and cultural landmarks, and to create more opportunities for recreation. And we are, as I've said, somewhat of a victim of our own success. Because Plymouth is such a wonderful place, we have more people who are coming here. That creates a greater demand for housing and increased expense for services, facilities, and infrastructure. Those rising costs are excluding some people from town. And that's going to hurt our community. We need to preserve those things that make Plymouth such a special place. And at the same time, we need to prove And at the same time, we need to provide things for those people who want to be part of our community. As I said, it's balance. It's respecting our past and planning for our future. It's not an easy task. There's no simple answer to it. But I do believe that we can do it. I believe that my experience working as an attorney with municipalities all over New England, my dedication and commitment to the town through the multiple committees that I have been a part of, and my proven interest in planning as the alternate in the planning board, give me the opportunity to work with everyone to try and achieve that result. I hope you'll support me in that effort and vote Steve Bolleton for planning board on May 21st. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for participating in this interview. We wish you the best of luck throughout your campaign in, in the election. Today, we're speaking with Nick Philla, one of the two candidates for the planning board in the Plymouth Town election. Nick, thank you so much for joining us today.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're going to get right into our questions. Question number one. The goal of every community is to be a sustainable one, offering economic opportunities, a safe place to raise a family, access to clean air and water, and a sense of community. Can Plymouth be considered a sustainable community? And if not, how can the planning board be part of creating this type of community?
I would say it is a sustainable community. We go back, obviously, 400 years. It's always had its downtown, it's always had industry that supported it all, had a beautiful retail downtown. The school system has always been adaptable. When it first started, everyone was in walking distance. The Village of Plymouth, which is on the east side of the highway, is probably the core part of Plymouth. And I came in in 1972. And they were just developing the western part of the, with all the new subdivisions and shopping centers. And I think one of the big questions relative to sustainability, we do have a beautiful aquifer that we do, we protect pretty well. We have a tremendous amount of open space. The state forest provides a real nucleus of open space. We have our beaches. We are getting a lot of apartment development now, which I begin to question. I was driving around some of the new, new apartment things. They're all five stories high. And I question what the impact of those will be in the near future.
Okay, well, and we'll probably cover that a little bit further down
Okay.
in the questions. So we are a sustainable community. And if you had a tagline to say why people should come to Plymouth to live, what would that be?
I think it's the most beautiful town on the South Shore, if not in the state, in terms of a coastal town. I'm from New York, Long Island, New York. I hope you notice the accent. When I came here, I just fell in love with the place in terms of all the things that it offered. It's a very mixed community, a variety of people of different origins. We have the Portuguese in North Plymouth, we have Italians, we have a beautiful Jewish population. I'm a Catholic myself. So the variety of experiences you have in the town are just absolutely incredible. When you put that in combination with the open space, the forests, the ponds, and beaches, it's really a wonderful, wonderful town. I just met with a client today that's from Holliston. They're in their 70s. They bought a small house down on Reed Avenue, a little 900-square-foot thing. Excuse me. And essentially, they want to come here and live full-time, which is absolutely incredible. We talked about the restaurants that they like, the places you can go to. We have a beautiful theater now. Memorial Hall has always been a venue of entertainment. And so I just think it's a great, great town.
Yeah, I'm going to argue with you on that one. Okay, question number two. Economic development is always a major topic of discussion in the town. Based on what Plymouth can offer, what type of business and/or industry would be best suited for the town to increase the tax revenue and ease the tax burden currently experienced by the residential taxpayers without being a magnet for controversy?
Well, it's certainly not the racetrack. We have a real dilemma now in terms of development. I know the selectmen have been talking about increasing the tax base. Unfortunately, with the internet, that has taken away from retail shops. It's taken away from office buildings. People are still working from, from their home. So there's really, really a vacuum in terms of existing buildings that are unoccupied and not being used. I just drove up to Colony Place. And in one section, every other store is vacant. You look at the Hanover, not the Hanover Mall, but the Kingston Mall, which is nearby, but they tore down Sears, a huge, big-box retail store, and built apartments. So the question is, if you were to rezone the entire town to commercial and industrial, no one would come because there's so much vacancy now, all up and down Route 3, around 128. It's something, I guess the planning board is working on a master plan. But I think there has to be studies relative to what is viable in the near future. You just can't say, let's rezone it industrial, let's rezone it commercial. It won't work.
I guess I'm looking for the types of industries that you could bring to a town like Plymouth in the limited space that maybe we do have available that would not have such an impact on the environment or the water supply or whatever it is, and yet would provide a tax base. Are there industries out there? That's what I meant by kind of a non-controversial industry because it's not going to draw away from all the, all the services that we need.
Well, a couple of years ago, when I was on the planning board, I did a study for Long Pond Road in the vicinity of that woodlot. I actually have copies of it here in front of me. And it involved redoing the road network so that people just wouldn't go along, along Pond Road. The north side where Home Depot is, was rezoned to five stories. I thought that was very crucial in terms of getting the development that we need. If you stay with the two-story or three-story type building, that was common basically for zoning in every suburban town since it was incorporated. You won't attract anybody. So five stories, I think, has shown. We have some beautiful new hotels that are four or five stories. I think we're maxed out on hotels. But it's difficult. I mean, like I say, you can rezone more, but how do you attract it? What, well, Plymouth is an attraction in itself. I've also done studies relative to quasi-public things. I did a study for an aquarium where the Revere Copper and Brass used to be. And the still valuable land on the ocean side is actually a pumping station would be ideal for pumping water into the aquarium. But that's more of an attraction that doesn't have a large tax base. It would probably be a nonprofit organization.
Right.
The apartments that are going up, that is, in terms of the size of the units, if they're one and two bedrooms and age-restricted, that definitely increases the tax base. But if you drive around town now, you just see hundreds and hundreds of apartments.
Well, we'll definitely get into that one.
So it's, it's, and if you look at it from a macro point of view, New England is really at the edge of the United States. So if you're in a new industry like Tesla, for example, the distribution pattern that you would have to support the rest of the United States doesn't exist. That's why he's looking at Texas, for example, or, or the Midwest, or Colorado. So I think your industrial, commercial base is going to be limited in terms of its location. But I think that the beauty of Plymouth is that people want to live and work here. So it's, we're going to find, now, the other thing that I think is important is we have the hospital. And there's some, been some brand-new medical office buildings. That could be developed a little bit more, a lot more, I think. And there's always the possibility of a medical college or something like that in town.
Okay, excellent. Question number three. Every year, this question is asked, and we have yet to see any action on it. So affordable or workforce housing is one of the priorities listed by the planning board in its Housing Production Plan and one of its goals listed on the town website. Yet, there doesn't seem to be housing available that the workforce can afford. Despite the growth we've seen in residential development, how can workforce housing actually be created in Plymouth? Is it something that is not achievable at this time? Or does there need to be some kind of creative plan between the town and a private organization?
Well, I think the private organization should build it. But I did a couple of studies for the intermediate school on Long Pond Road. There's a beautiful piece of vacant land right in front. That would be ideal for workforce housing, for teachers, for anybody that, that lives nearby. I think one of the keys to do it is to find land like that, that's free, I mean, that the town owns. There could be a bid that goes out saying, develop, give us a proposal for this, and we'll sell you the land for a dollar or something like that. The cost of materials is killing everything right now. And some of the building regulations are tough, too. But I think one of the keys is to find land that the town owns that's in a, in a nice area, that's not remote, that can do that. And every school, if you look at every school, there's quite a bit of property that's not devoted to recreation fields that, that could be used for that. The new high school, for example, has plenty of land that's non-athletic. And that would be an ideal location for the, the new high school. Well, actually, there's two.
Yeah.
Off of Aubrey Street. You could attract people at the medical, at the hospital. You could attract all kinds of workers there, including the, the teachers and faculty and whatever.
So how would you define workforce housing? I mean, what, what would it look like?
I think it's sort of starter housing, I would think. Probably one, you could have studio apartments. You could have one and two-bedroom. I think every, when everyone starts young, they, some at times get married and have families, and they want to expand. But I think, but it would be a mix. I think you have to do, this couple that I just dealt with, they're retired couple. One was a postman, and she worked for a TV station. But they would, all their needs are just one and two bedrooms. They're looking for, for the grandchildren, space for the grandchildren to come.
Yeah, when they visit, yeah.
So there wouldn't be a four-bedroom house, you know, with a swimming pool.
And a big piece of land.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. It still hasn't been done.
Free land.
Huh?
Free land. And we have plenty of it in Plymouth.
Yep. Okay. Each board in town can look at the same issue and come at it from different viewpoints to address it in their own bubble, if you will. Is that the most efficient way for the boards to work towards solving an issue? Or would it be possible for there to be quarterly, maybe, public meetings where boards and committees could gather together to work on a singular issue in the same room in tandem?
Yes, it is possible. When I was on the planning board, we were working on the new schools. And the, the planning board and the selectmen had, I think, a meeting once a month. I don't know if they do that anymore. But we got together, discussed the issues, see what their perspective is, see what our perspective was. I think it should be with the school committee, for example, unless it's not a school issue.
Right.
Those, if you go to different towns to get a permit, for example, I'm doing a childcare center in Yarmouth. They have a, a meeting with the DPW, the Police Department, the Fire Department, has an informal meeting with, with a developer to iron out questions. And that gets relayed back to the various boards. And I, I think, I don't know why we don't do it more. And even presentations, more presentations, town meeting would be worthwhile. Or having the, the precinct captain come to, come to these meetings, too.
Yeah, just to share the information.
Yes.
Especially where it seems that there are boards and committees that are working basically on the same issue. They're just, they've, they just have their little piece of it.
Yeah.
And sometimes I wonder.
Unfortunately.
If you, if you got all in the same room and it kind of had a think tank.
I think we ought to incorporate that into either bylaw or whatever to make sure it's done on a regular basis. And not just, like I said, when I was on the planning board, we met with the selectmen several times, and they didn't know we were working on something. And we didn't know they were working on something.
Right.
It's amazing how, even in the same town, how there's really a lack of communication, you know? The Fire Department is an important asset in terms of how development should happen.
Sure. Yeah, there's a lot of stakeholders in any kind of development, yeah. Is there any particular part of the planning board that you think, the board that you're, you're running to be on, that needs to be changed or a different way that they do business? Is there something that you think isn't done as efficiently as it could be done?
Well, my thing is, and this would require a change in state law, I think the planning board, excuse me, should be the permit granting authority for special permits. What happens now is we review a special permit. And we have staff, we have professional staff, we bring in engineers, and we make a recommendation to the Board of Appeals. And we have citizen input, all kinds of information. Pine Hills, we, we spent a year and a half with all kinds of specialists in determining how, how the land should be used. And so if, if we do that, I think we have a chance of, of really, I'd like to see the planning board get, get in control of the special permit. They, they say, oh, that's too much power, there's a reference. But it could just be the opposite. The Board of Appeals could be, we're elected officials. And we have a direct responsibility to, to the voters, to the people in town. And the appointed Board of Appeals, I don't want to, you know, be negative.
Are you talking about the ZBA?
Yeah, the ZBA.
Okay.
Sometimes they don't get or understand the recommendations that we make and why we made them. Maybe it's possible that we could have, I know Lee Hartman occasionally goes to the Board of ZBA to explain something. There should be a little bit more communication with them. And maybe they should come to some of our planning board meetings. Because we usually have the engineers and the experts there
Yeah.
that explain pros and cons of an issue.
Okay, okay, great. Number five. The seat you're running for is a five-year term. Decisions made by the planning board affect Plymouth now, but also down the road. How do you view your role on the board during the five years you'll be on it? And what impact do you want to make on the town beyond that?
Well, having been on the planning board, I can say that we've had two major projects, Pine Hills and Red Brook, that I think have been totally beneficial to the town. They're award-winning mixed-use developments. They have senior citizens, they have apartments, they have lots of commercial. I think that'll always be a lasting impact in the town. We have, I've, I've worked on a series of master plans. I gave you an example of the aquarium downtown, which would be an everlasting phenomenon. We almost had it in the works. There was a developer from Tennessee that did aquariums in Tennessee and other areas that's very interested in it. But sometimes, some of the locals can't see beyond the future in terms of what can be done for the town of Plymouth. One of the things we have now are tremendous destination restaurant-type activities.
Yes.
And this couple I talked to today had their favorite restaurants, they love it. And the, the husband said, well, honey, we're going to be living here all year round. We don't have to go to a restaurant every night.
But you could.
Yeah, you could. And never repeat.
Yeah. So you, you talked about the things that you've done in the past, the Pine Hills and the Red Brook. But for the next five years, if you get elected, what are, what are some of the really important projects that you want to work on that are going to be lasting and effective and impactful for this town moving forward?
Well, somehow, we have to look at our malls. The Kingston Mall, demolishing the Sears was, I think, a milestone in terms of bringing mixed uses to malls that are not functioning now. I think if you, if you... I think if you, if you look at the parking, the empty parking lots, and all the stores that are vacant, maybe a mixture of residential in those areas so people can actually get out of their apartment and walk into a mall and shop. The other thing is, I'm worried about the railroad. We had that little spur that has come in. It seems to be sputtering. And somehow, I'd like to see that develop a little bit more so that we have trains that are on a regular basis. I think that would help a lot.
Okay.
And so, that's basically it.
Okay. And are there any things, we have about six minutes left. Anything you want to talk about that we didn't bring up, that you think is important for other residents to know about?
Well, I think the racetrack proposal is the biggest one. And I have to speak hypothetically on that because down the road, if it comes before the Planning Board, and I've said negative things about it, they could disqualify me and stuff like that. But if you take the type of facility, the racetrack, and put it in a different town, you would ask a lot of questions. What is the infrastructure like? Can the roads handle it? Is it near rapid transit, for example? Many of your racetracks are connected to rapid transit to bring in people. It's not just going to be the Plymouth residents that go to the racetrack. If you look at the neighboring uses, what would happen if there's an intermediate school along the entrance to a racetrack? Or a skating facility? That's about as hypothetical as you can get, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
All of those factors, to me, would be detrimental to the town. And I would say that for any racetrack to occur in this state, the infrastructure has to be, almost already be there. You can't expect to widen the road from two lanes to four lanes and have a series of traffic lights and a bunch of things like that. So, I think that's one of the super issues.
So, you don't think that this is a good idea for Plymouth?
Hypothetically, no.
Okay. Okay. Mostly for the fact of the infrastructure. What about the tax base that it's supposed to bring in?
Well, I don't know, you know, most of your tax base is generated by a building. Now, a racetrack has the grandstands. I don't know what the cost of that is, how that's evaluated, if the town assessors would evaluate it from the cost of construction or from the income that it generates. So, I don't, and then you have all the stables, and, I mean, it's a huge amount of area. If you look at, I've been looking at aerial photography, Google Earth of different racetracks, and the amount of stables is like twice the size of the racetrack itself. And those, I would say, are not really tax-generating buildings. So, I think if this moves along further, we should invite either other racetrack owners or other towns that have racetracks and let them explain what the tax base is, does it work, et cetera, like that.
And another thing that came up was the ancillary things around it. Would there be, you know, is there a casino? Is there a slot parlor? Is there, are there other venues that are going to pop up with it?
I guess they, they seem to be indicating that that's part of the venue, entertainment center. I don't know, I just think Plymouth is so beautiful now, I really don't think we would need it.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Yep, that's, everyone has opinions on this, and it's very interesting to hear how people feel. Now, for the last minute or so, why don't you tell the voters why they should select you as one of the candidates?
Okay. Do you mind if I read?
Not at all. Go right ahead.
As an architect in town with a master's degree in city planning from the University of Pennsylvania, I've always been concerned with the quality and rate of land development here in Plymouth. The zoning bylaw has been in effect in our town for 50 years. That's a mere 13% of the town Plymouth has been in existence. Does it work, and how has it impacted the quality of life for its residents? When I look back at what had been built prior to zoning, I see a well-defined community with a vitality and a strength and the character of a hometown. I see where people lived, worked, and shopped, where they worshipped, and where their children went to school. I also see the outlying village centers, which always express their own identity and sense of community. Finally, I see the vast forest, streams, ponds, coastline, and bogs, which have always been an essential part of the character of Plymouth. As a member of the Planning Board, I rely heavily on this well-defined sense of community to serve as a basis for future master planning, to provide solutions to our vast array of planning issues. We must reinforce and revitalize our downtown and our tourist-related areas. We must continue to strengthen and expand the commercial base, and we must guarantee to future generations the protection of our natural resources and the enhancement of our parks and recreation areas. In dealing with these planning issues, I would use as my guideline a simple question: Does it make Plymouth a better place to live in?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We'd like to thank Nick very much for participating in this interview. We wish you the best of luck throughout your campaign and in the election. For our viewers, thank you for joining us. If you're interested in watching replays of this interview, please visit our website, pacTV.org/elections, for replay times and online viewing options, including PAC TV's on-demand and streaming service, PAC TV Prime. And please, make your choices heard by voting in the election on Saturday, May 21st. Thank you, and good day.